You can call the meeting to order.
All right. Well, let me say good afternoon to everybody.
Mayor, you gotta ask the, ask the clerk to follow the rule.
Oh, I will. I was just speaking to the public. I will. All right, today's session, April 6, 2020, of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order. And we're participating by electronic communication pursuant to section 2.2, that's 3708. Point two, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Ordinance number 41703-032720 and resolution number 41704-032720. I will at this time ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the rule.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. White Boy?
Here.
Mr. Best Bitch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Staggers?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And the quorum is present. All seven members of the council are present by electronic means and declare that a quorum is present. As permitted by Virginia Code, section 2.2-3708, pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-37083, Virginia Code, section 15.2-1413, and ordinance number 41703032720. The agenda items for this regular meeting session of city council involve matters to address the emergency created by COVID-19 pandemic. All right, I will deliver the invocation and I'll also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that everybody would bow their heads. It toll God our Father, we come to you at this time as elected and appointed officials, asking for your direction and guidance as we assemble today to discuss the business of our city. Help us in our decision making, not only with the COVID-19 virus, but also our economic crisis that we have in the federal government, state government, and our local government as we go forward. And we want to recognize how important it is because we live in times where a number of our citizens are unemployed or out of business, struggling to pay taxes or put food on the table, to purchase medicine. There's a tremendous struggle. We're looking to you, Lord, to help us and to guide us as we go forth and make sure that we remain sober and vigilant during this pandemic, trusting in you to bring us through. And Lord, I ask that as we talk about numbers and people that are suffering and dying, that they not become just numbers, but Lord, let us remember that they are fathers, mothers, brothers, husbands, wives, sisters, aunts, uncles, cousins, all a people, more than just a number. And so we pray that you would be with those families who, who have family members in the hospitals and those who have been infected with this virus. And give us the strength and the courage as we go forward today in doing our city's business. It is in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV 2.3 on Thursday, April the 9th at 7:00 PM and Saturday, April the 11th at 4:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing. Pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3708, this regular session of city council is being conducted by electronic communication means. The COVID-19 pandemic disaster makes it impractical and unsafe for a quorum of city council to physically assemble in one location during this disaster. Each member of council has accessed through the Zoom meeting platform and can participate in this meeting. The city has provided the public with information to allow the public access to observe the regular session through live broadcast on RV TV, live streaming on Facebook, and posted on YouTube. The city has provided notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, April the 2nd, 2020. City staff, including the city manager, the city clerk, the city attorney, and technical staff are present in the council chamber and are participating in this regular session. To facilitate this process today, to ensure that all council members and the public follow these proceedings, I ask that whenever a member speaks, including making a motion, to first state the member's name, then make the motion, or second. At this time, I'm asking members whether they have any questions about the process. If not, I'll ask the city manager to advise if he has any comments. And let me just state that, and the city manager may allude to this, is that when we go through our briefings, and Amelia will be doing that, we will hold our questions until we have the break and finish. And then what I'm going to do is call on each council member, and I do it today in alphabetical order. And we'll do that as each, whenever there's a break, and I'll call on you. So I would maybe suggest that you write down your questions and what have you as we go forward. All right. City Manager Cowell, do you have any comments or any questions that you'd like to make?
No, nothing personal from what you already mentioned there. Thank you.
All right. Item number two is presentations and acknowledgements. We have none. And item number three, the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, a recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. Based upon Executive Order Number 51 issued by Governor Northam on March 17, 2020, Executive Order Number 55, comma, issued by Governor Northam on March 20th, March 30th, excuse me, 2020, Virginia Code, section 2.2-3708, the point 283, Code of Virginia, section 15.2-1413, ordinance number 41703-032720 and resolution number 41704-032720. City council will be conducting this regular session of city council by electronic communication means without the presence of members, without a, without a quorum city council physically present in council chambers and without the presence of members of the public in this seated chamber. All right, in order to afford citizens an opportunity to provide comments to the city council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of city council conducted by electronic communication means were instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the city's clerk's office at clerk@roanokeba.gov and by phone at 540-853-2541 by 12 noon today, April 6. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the regular session at this agenda item number three, an addressed city council by electronic communication means. And the city staff at this time will ask members whether they have any questions. Will ask members that they have any, any questions. And I'm going to identify, city staff will identify each citizen to speak, and then that citizen may address city council. So, Madam Clerk, can you or some member of the staff identify the person who has, or individual requested to speak?
Yes, I will. The first citizen is Master McCorville.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yo, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Yes.
Great. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to address you. I hope that you all are feeling well. I'm actually watching on Channel 3, which is a delay and no sound. That's probably a good thing. And what I'd like to talk about is the Greenway, the closure of the Greenway. I'm concerned about that because I use it a lot, and particularly during this time. And I was surprised by the quick closure of the Greenway. I'm sure you've heard about it. And I know that we, the city needs to reduce contact between people, maintain social distance as much as possible. And I'm certainly glad the city is protecting the citizens. That's certainly the main thing we should be doing right now. And the Greenway may indeed be a small issue when everything is said and done, but I'm just wondering if people using the Greenway had been advised to be a little more sharply behaved and maintain small groups, maintain social distancing. Maybe there's a way we could have avoided closing the Greenway. And that if there had been some warning, I know the signage on the Greenway is pretty minimal, and the only ones that ever caught my eye were last week when the closure signs popped out. They were pretty big. And, but certainly reducing contact is something we have to do. And I think people are honoring the closure. I was standing there yesterday, and I didn't see any traffic. So that's one thing for this whole effort to be successful, citizens have to obey the things that the government needs them to do. And if you have any questions, I'm talking too fast, but now I'm trying to get this in here. Let me move to the thing, one thing that's really important. Was pointed out to me by a friend that the Greenway at Garden City is really important. There's no sidewalk there that runs up beside Garden City Boulevard. And it's a busy road. I've ridden my bike up and down there a lot in the past. And the, the Greenway is a real godsend there, and it's really more like a sidewalk than a Greenway. And I think the city, the council, you should consider maybe just opening that's a complete different thing. It doesn't even have to, you know, once you get on the Greenway, you don't have to ride the whole thing. You can choose options. So that's one thing I wanted to make sure we talk about. And also, there's the fact that the Greenway is used for transportation. People who live on the can certainly use the Greenway to get to the hospital. Another big place is the Food Line on Bennington, where some people may not have cars. It's hard for them to get to the grocery store, and we certainly still have to go shop. So those are just things that I think we need to consider. And I realize we probably just can't open the Greenway right away. But another friend suggested one way to reduce crowds would be to just close the parking lots along the Greenway, the ones that are in the Greenway, so that people would not congregate as much. And then just give them some information about exactly what they're supposed to do. Because not everybody watches the same media. Some people may think that the virus is still not a big deal, depending on what they're watching. So we'd all like to think that we are listening to the governor and to the, the city. And, and certainly we should be, but that doesn't always happen. So anyway, that's what I wanted to throw out there. And thank you for your time and certainly appreciate your efforts. Let's just hope we all get through this with good health. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Cowell, do you have any comment? Do you have any comments you want to make with regards to?
Not at this time, perhaps after all the folks had an opportunity to sit back and talk further.
Madam Clerk, is there any other?
Yes, our second speaker is Stephen Ambrose. He's not on the line, so nobody else online. That's what I'm rehearing now. No, no one else is online. I do have an email from Barbara Dirk that she sent in earlier, well, on Friday, and she wanted this read.
All right.
Mayor and members of council, I am Barbara Dirk, following our comments regarding alternative transportation routes during this pandemic. I believe that if you are not part of the solution, then you are part of the problem. I also strongly encourage people to shelter in place and eliminate all unnecessary trips. Some people still need to access the workplace. Essential services are, as stated, essential. Grocery stores and drugstores and convenience stores provide needed, not wanted supplies. Some people do not own motor vehicles. This is a decision made because of a lifestyle choice or financial responsibility. The Greenways were built with alternative transportation modes. They are designed to provide safe walking and bicycle transportation corridors. Greenways in Roanoke allow safe access to work and essential services. A detour to link one Greenway where it crosses is difficult. To avoid the green, to avoid the Garden City Greenway, shared use path persons walking and bicycle, bicycle would be forced into the street. The Greenways are designed and funded with transportation funds. Do not discriminate against persons who walk and use bikes as transportation. Allow runovers to legally use Greenways as transportation corridors for access to work and essential services. Barbara and Dirk.
All right. Thank you. And so does that conclude all the hearing of citizens? Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk? Hello?
Yes, yes, I believe Mr. Cowell must be now. Yeah, sorry. And so I'm sorry. Yeah, I think the, we've certainly heard a number of and right now, the closure is in effect until the end of this month. And we certainly can talk about ways in which the Greenway can either be open or parts of the Greenway can be open depending on, as we get closer, whether any of these might be associated with that. And, and of course, balance against what the public health obligations are along with whatever further guidance we might be getting from the health department or from the CDC at that time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're now going on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. And we do not have one today, or a regular agenda. And so we're on item number five, which is the public hearings. We have none. Item number six is petitions and communications. There are none. And item number seven is reports of the city officers and comments of the city manager. And I will refer to manager for briefing. Let me just say that before the city manager makes his presentation, I ask that council members hold their questions. Hold their questions. The presentation will have a break, which will be after presentation of the current fiscal year 2019, fiscal year 2018, 2020 budget. And a second break after completion of the FY 2020, 2021 budget. At each break, I will ask each council member in alphabetical order for their questions and comments. So we're different this afternoon, but we'll feel good to your questions and comment. So this time I'll call on the city manager to introduce the briefing.
Thank you, Mayor. And can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm gonna start kind of with the introduction of the item first, internal review. As you all know, ordinarily at this time, we wouldn't actually be discussing at all the current year budget, as we would usually just be weeks away from the submission of the proposal, but of course, there's really nothing, the current circumstances are very fluid. So we'll actually be spending most of this presentation talking about the current budget. We will also be providing some insight as to how we are starting to remount the FY 21 budget proposal as well as identifying some of the next steps that we will be taking as we go forward. In many ways, as we go through this presentation, you're gonna see that this is really a story of seeming two completely different cities, that one before lunch and one after lunch. And then there is still more of that story to be written yet, because many of these implications and impacts will be between one and two FY 22. While we'll be talking obviously today about the budget and fiscal issues, it is not without recognition that there remains currently a public health crisis present in our community. So I certainly don't want folks to assume that because we're spending all of our time today talking about money that we have somehow forgotten the public health crisis that is underway. Let me share first a little bit of the approach that I'm taking with the FY 20 sort of response, if you will, and I'll talk again about this with the FY 21 budget also. But there are a few basic objectives that I'm presenting as we're trying to respond to FY 20. Firstly, foremost is to continue to fund and provide our essential services. And I want to stress that while everyone actually thinks of the essential services around fire EMS, police department, 911, all of those obviously are those that you see up front as essential services. But recognize that without the mechanics, the clerks, the custodians, the technicians, and many, many others that work within the organization, those individuals cannot provide their services to the community. So that's number one, is continue to fund and provide essential services. The other objective is to ensure that we give a form to the FY 21 budget. And as I mentioned, this is not going to end with the FY 20 budget. It will continue on as we go into FY 21, very likely into FY 22 as well. Also, another objective is to protect staff resources. We are, for all, a service organization. We are people heavy, and it is our biggest asset, and it is helping to deliver services. The other, another objective is to prepare for FY 22, even though that's a couple of years off. There are implications that I believe will hold valid type of real estate between keeping the back of our minds as crap, both our response to FY 20 and as we start to rebuild the FY 21 budget. We also need to continue to help figure out ways for the community to recover and that employer is being able to manage whatever federal, state, or other support may come our way via financial or otherwise. And of course, one of the objectives is that I intend on balancing this budget and your next budget based upon the current revenues and expenditures, not relying on federal aid to try to balance the budget. If you receive federal aid, that will allow us to do some things that we might not otherwise be able to do, but we're not going to balance, or at least my proposal will not be balancing the budget on the assumption that that aid may be forthcoming in that rate to use it as we choose to use it. Much of what we're sharing, and I think you'll hear us part of it, eat this more than anything else, much of what we're sharing remains very unknown. And so it's a significant change. All of the recommendations that we made, all the estimates, all the projections are informed, but it's an extremely volatile situation. And so we'll try to highlight where we can the areas where an assumption is, is really solid and where an assumption or a projection may have quite a bit of question associated with it. And as we go through this presentation, Amelia will be walking us through. There will be several times where I will entrance in the middle and try to illustrate another point associated with that. But I felt it important to sort of set the context as we go through here as to objectives that I'm putting in place as we attempt to deal with the revenue shortfall that is occurring for FY 20 and then getting ready to respond likewise for FY 21, so again, for FY 22. So at that point, at this point, I'm gonna turn over to Amelia so she can begin walking me through the presentation. And like I said, there'll be a few times where I'll jump in as well and maybe illustrate a different point or condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of city council. And we'll apologize in advance as we attempt to talk through these masks as we deliver this information to you this afternoon. As we move forward to slide, slide two on our agenda for today, as Bob indicated, we do want to give you an update as to the performance as of the end of February for the current fiscal year, and that is pre-COVID-19 in terms of the impacts on our revenues and expenditures. And then we'll move forward to fiscal 21 in terms of how the development is proceeding and what our next steps will be. On slide three, beginning our discussion about the status of fiscal 20. We start our discussion here with the reflection on the budgetary status, again, pre-COVID-20 of 19. Comparing month-end fiscal 2019, February, to February month-end fiscal 2020, revenues increased approximately $4.9 million or 3.53%. We'd attribute that in terms of local taxes to $4.2 million of that relative to real estate, business license, personal property, sales tax, delinquent taxes, meals tax, and very, very slightly transient occupancy. Again, $4.9 million or 3.5% ahead of the last fiscal year at the end of February before any pre-COVID impacts were beginning to be seen. From the expenditure side, through the end of February, expenditures increased approximately $5.4 million or 2.9% compared to that same period, again, pre-COVID impacts. Moving to slide four. As we look at our projections for fiscal 2020 compared to the adopted budget, we have to take into account our COVID impacts as we look forward. And you'll see there on the left side, as we go down through those local taxes, we are making some assumptions regarding our local impacts with information that we've received from not only a local perspective, but also looking at the state and national economy as it unfolds. We are forced to make informed assumptions regarding future revenue performance, and every category will be impacted in some manner. As we look at the real estate tax, we are predicting that for the period of April through June, there potentially will be a .6 decline in revenues we would have otherwise received based on consumer activity. For sales tax, we have already been notified by the state that there will be a delay of one month in receipt of a month of sales tax. And we are from there determining perhaps that there could be a 50 to a 75% decline between the subsequent one single month that we are likely to receive in the current fiscal year. For transient occupancy tax, we are assuming that as we go forward, there potentially is an 85% decline in what we otherwise would have received April through June and 13th period. Prepared food and beverage, assuming a 90% decline in what we otherwise would have received April through 13th period. Cigarette tax, we were already experiencing a decline in that revenue and are projecting a 4.4% decline for the rest of the fiscal year. Motor vehicle license tax, assuming a 5% decline somewhat due to collectibility with regard to that tax. Communications tax, we were already experiencing a decline with that revenue and are predicting a 5% decline. Personal property, we are predicting for April, May, and June, again, a 4% decline in receipt of revenue during those months due to collectibility. Business license tax predicting a 50% decline in collectibility for those months as well. There at the bottom, you see there are numerous other local taxes that are represented. But we are predicting across the fiscal year from, for fiscal 2020, based on the revised estimate that we have today, a 3.84% decline in anticipated revenues compared to the adopted budget or $7.8 million for local taxes. As we move forward to slide five. As you would imagine, there are concerns regarding the impacts of COVID-19 on our local, state, and national economy. Each day brings further developments which have potential local impacts from sickness to financial. We have concerns financially that revenues will be further impacted by the actions of the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are several revenues totaling approximately $17 million yet to be received, as noted here on slide five. The majority of them are typically received in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. We are also unaware of at this time the manner in which the Commonwealth may distribute any of the federal aid which is anticipated to be available. And again, we are not considering any of that potential aid in our balancing considerations for the rest of the fiscal year. We also have concerns regarding consumer behavior, given recent closures of local businesses. Because of these factors, we find it necessary to take a fairly aggressive approach in preparation for potential impacts, including expenditure reductions or purchasing delays. Moving forward to the next slide, which is slide six. As mentioned, we are moving forward with departmental expenditure controls and adjustments. Our departments were asked to identify expenditures which were absolutely critical through the end of the fiscal year. They continue to work collaboratively with us as we implement a response to the anticipated revenue shortfall. We also anticipate the necessity of delaying the purchase of selected fleet capital and delaying some capital expenditures as the virus impacts unfold over the next several weeks and months. The virus impacts will also impact our funding formula partners such as Run-up City Public Schools, receiving 40% of adjusted local taxes, and Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge receiving 3/8 of the transient occupancy tax. As you can imagine, it is even more critical that the Department of Finance monitor revenues and expenditures on a daily and weekly basis, but will report on a monthly basis. Should it be necessary, a recommendation will come forward to the city manager for additional expenditure revisions to be worked through with our departments.
If you find that one of the points that are reinforced, I'm not really mentioning, which just the adjustments to the funding for funding partners. Want to make it clear that our approach typically at the end of the year is...
Bob, I'm having trouble hearing you at this point. Could you get a little closer to the mic?
As close as I can get. So take a mask off here, so. All right, we're going to do it this way, since no one's sitting next to me. The, just to make it clear with our funding partners for our formulas, typically at the end of a year, we will effectively settle up with them. Sometimes we, because it's been a good year, we will forward some additional money to them, which has been the case in the last couple of years, and sometimes they will need to return dollars to us. In this case, because of the significance of it, because we already effectively calculated what is going to likely be the impact for the rest of the year. In effect, we have, in light of the rest of the year, over the year, there has been more funding forward to them than what will ultimately be necessary. And so as each month's payments go forward to them, they will be lower than what it would have been of the original projections. So just want to make it clear that we're in effect going to sort of, if you will, divvy up the pain month by month rather than wait till the end of the year and try to figure out how the revenues each other hold at the end of the year. So there will still be a validation at the end of the year, it can be certain that we had a miss, obviously, anything either worse or better. But I just want to make sure that's clear, that because of our formulas, as our revenue goes down, so goes down the revenues available to the schools as well as to, in this case, at least, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge.
At this point, we'll pause for any other questions or concerns before moving to fiscal 21.
Yeah, I'll leave you with one, a couple of thoughts here and then any questions you all might have on what we're sharing with you regarding FY 20 and also what our approach is and viewing with it. Again, as Amelia mentioned, right now, our best projections, our best guess means are that it's a reduced revenue of about $18 of local taxes. There remain some very significant big unearls. Those, of course, most importantly, are any further COVID impacts and costs. We don't get a lot of some of those, are, since we're still in the midst of that health issue. And then, of course, as was mentioned, state funding, we are still very dependent on the arrival of state funding that we typically will count for as we go through. And any, any significant change in that will reduce or result in significant reductions further into the budget. So that's, that's kind of where we are and what our approach is right now. At least our best guess of where we are and what our approach is in light of where we believe it to be. And at this point, any of us will have to answer any questions you might have relative to FY 20.
Well, thank you, Bob. And I'm going to go right down the line, starting with Mr. Best Pitch and for any questions or comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amelia and Bob, for bringing us up to date on all of this. Going back to slide number three, which was FY 2020, year-to-date general fund overview. For the revenues, we have there the comparison to the same period in FY 19, which would be 12 months earlier, and we have the local taxes year-to-date performance ahead of target or will be budgeted up to that point. On the expenditures, we have the first, but not the second, and I find them both helpful. Is there a way we can get where we are on expenditures as of the end of February as compared to budget at that point?
Yes, Mr. Best, we can, we can provide you with that information. I mean, the, the short answer is that much like revenue kind of came to largely a halt to, to the extent practical, those discretionary items within our control also obviously came to a halt on the expenditure side. Yes, we can provide sort of an idea and Amelia's signature to have some of that information.
Well, Mr. Best Pitch, the difficulty in providing that on the expenditure side is that we have actual projections that are, are time-sensitive for revenue projections. Based on departmental operations, we don't necessarily have those same targets for the expenditure budgets. We can tell you what was spent, as we do here, what was spent in the prior year, but as activities change, the anticipated expense level changes as well.
Okay, I understand. That, that, that makes sense. I appreciate that. Then the only other question I have would be on the next slide, FY 2020 local tax revenue estimate. Under the business license, it shows a 50% decline for the last quarter of this fiscal year, but overall a 9.17% increase.
That is year over year.
Yeah. So, so we were expecting to have a lot more than 9.71 increase, and now it's come down a little bit. Is that what I'm understanding from this slide?
No, sir. Actually, what we were expecting was that actual revenues were going to be lower than they're actually performing. They have outperformed our estimate already. And, and because of that, we anticipate that they will end the fiscal year 9.17 higher than the adopted budget. But we do anticipate...
Decline in the last quarter.
Correct, in the last quarter, due to the ability for consumers to pay the remaining portion, we are anticipating a lower collection ability.
Right. Of course, most of that has already been paid, so there wouldn't be a lot typically coming in during the fourth quarter anyway. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all the questions that I have at this point.
Thank you, Best Pitch. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Um, Amelia, to a point that you just raised about the basis of collectibility, I guess this is a general question, and you may or may not be able to answer it. Based on the taxes received thus far, and we're at a couple of those deadlines today and, and in the, the month ahead, do you know what percentage of that revenue is typically cash-based? And what I mean by that is people who, citizens who are paying cash and who don't have the access to do that at this point because of the municipal offices being closed. Do you have an estimate of what that amount is?
We do have the ability to acquire that information, not specifically by particular tax, but on a cash, credit card, check basis. The treasurer's office is able to share with us per day what is received within the treasurer's office. And of course, with the municipal building closed, we have been in communication with the treasurer about what that revenue impact certainly is over the days that we are experiencing currently. Again, we have not been able to tie that to a specific revenue, but we do know what the potential cash impact could be.
Okay. And, and I suppose the same principle applies to the estimates that you've given us on projected decline, particularly around transient occupancy, prepared foods and beverage. Those seem to be the two areas that have the, the most significant impact in terms of revenue and, and ability to pay, ability to pay over a certain amount of time. Is that fairly accurate?
Correct, and, and the actual generation of the revenue itself due to activity within the economy.
Yeah, I think comes from, that's really the way to identify the food and beverage and the transient occupancy is not an issue of whether or not they can pay those, because remember, those are collected by customers.
Right.
From customers. It is really an issue of just a downturn in the presence of those customers. That's why, that's what the fall off, they just aren't collecting the revenues because they're not customers.
Okay. And I, and I guess my last question is just more of a philosophical question that we're probably all thinking about. Through this presentation, we're seeing how, how very much we are all connected to each other, how one thing impacts another thing, impacts another thing, impacts another thing. And we talked about how in, in two scenarios in particular, a decrease in revenue can directly then impact what we are able to pass on to, for example, schools. Another example, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. I, I would ask us, as we're building out this plan, to think strategically or creatively about what options we may have for local recovery through our projections, not knowing what the state is going to, what, what we will receive from the state or the federal government. So it's, it's more of a statement that as we're thinking about this, are there ways for us to, to generate some recovery and relief locally while sustaining the integrity and health of, of our budget? So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and thank you, Mr. Best Pitch and Mr. Cobb. You know, I, as most of my fellow councilmembers know, I have been really advocating for a delay in the imposition of penalties for taxes that are currently being collected. And we, this is the first chance we will have collectively to have that discussion publicly. And it's something that I think was really important, that we see these numbers and understand the overall impact. And so, you know, I'm looking at that $7.8 million number, Ms. Merchant, that's on the screen right now, and understanding how many jobs that is, understanding how many, you know, what a huge impact that is on our overall budget. But to Mr. Cobb's point, one of the things I am greatly concerned about is, and I've, the, the word, the phrasing that I've been using is the tail of this crisis, which is the longer that our businesses take to recover, the longer that individuals take to recover, then the longer the impact will be felt across, obviously, the city of Reno. And so I think this is the appropriate time to bring up this in conversation. And Ms. Merchant, I believe that the treasurer is actually there in the room with you. We're very lucky. I know that Ms., that Evelyn has been working very, very hard along with her staff. And I wanted to know, Mr. Mayor, if this would be the appropriate time to ask Evelyn to come up and speak a little bit about what she's hearing directly from citizens with regards to the collection. Today, we've got real estate taxes due. We have had, obviously, the 20th of each month is when our small business, when the trust taxes are due from meals and sales tax. And then our next big deadline, I believe, is going to be May 31st. And so I'm very interested in knowing, so this goes specifically to Mr. Cobb's question, which is, you know, what is the impact of not being able to accept cash payments right now? And is this a conversation that we should be having publicly about potentially delaying the imposition of penalties and fines, or fees, not fines, incurred at this point in time? Hi, Evelyn. It's good to see you.
Michelle, thank you. We are getting a lot of phone calls, and especially in the food service area, between the workers and the businesses about not being able to pay their taxes on time. Real estate taxes are due today, and we have, as of this morning, see if I can get my glasses on over top of this. Our collections summary report, and this is collections as of this morning at one, at one o'clock when I ran this report, this includes the first installment and the second installment of real estate taxes. We have $11.4 million to go. The first installment balance due, now this does, this total I'm going to give you does not include payments that we've taken in today. It's about $1.2 million. And the second installment is at $9.4 million. Like I say, we are getting some calls, but what we are asking people, most people are saying they can get this paid in 30 days. They're just concerned about the penalty. You know, senior citizens are calling in, a lot of people are calling in because we don't have a way to take cash payments right now. So, you know, we are trying to direct them to go to the bank. So, you know, we are trying to direct them to go to the banks and get cashier's checks. Some of the issues with them there is they don't drive, they don't have a way to get to the bank. Or, you know, the bank lobbies are closed, so the only way they can do it is through a drive-through. And I'm not dealing with all the banks, I don't know, but one called me this morning and said that one bank was only, they only had like one lane open if you needed to get a cashier's check, so that's delaying them. So they're very concerned about getting hit with a 10% penalty tomorrow. The business taxes, we, we're still, we are getting some money, but there are a lot of the filing forms are coming in for April with just the filing form and no check. And they're saying, you know, call us, will you give us a payment arrangement? So that's what we're doing right now. We are working with the businesses. And we are going to extend the number of months that we usually do two months, but we know that that is not going to work for them. So we will be extending those payment plans to, you know, whatever it does to help them. We are right now getting the personal property tax bill done today. We hope to have it ready tomorrow or hopefully on Wednesday, but we're getting ready to send out about 63,000 personal property bills. That's where the majority of the cash payments come in from, really. We have a lot of people that, right after we send that bill in, they don't have but just a debit card, so they don't have a way to use that debit card because they can't get into our office and they paying cash. So we are struggling with how to meet those demands.
So Evelyn, Mayor Lee, if you don't mind me asking, Ms. Powers directly, do you have an estimate, my biggest concern, obviously, concern for the citizens and, and, and trying to be helpful, given that there are so many hurdles and barriers right now to actually paying taxes, even if your intention is to pay them on time with the building being closed. There are a lot of different barriers and issues there. And Evelyn, I believe you had mentioned to me that going in after the fact, it, it requires a lot of staff time for you to go in after the fact and actually try and and individually create payment plans or individually waive penalties and fees and fines and that kind of thing. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would have to be done by, by, would create my staff to do tax charge correction forms. And currently, there are only four people in my office that have the authority to do that.
Okay. And I, I know that you've been working with people when they call in. And, you know, and I know that that's been a lot of the time that you're personally spending right now is actually on the phone with people who are calling in, either property owners or business owners trying to help. And so I'm wondering, you know, what can we do as council to be of assistance right now to the citizens who are concerned? And then also to your department as we're kind of moving through this crisis? Understanding that, you know, the city is in the same boat. I mean, we, you know, the city, in order to provide, and I think this was Mr. Cowes earlier, in order to provide all of the essential employees, in order to keep them working, you still, we still have to have mechanics and, and other folks that are supporting those people. So it's not like we have non-essential staff that can be furloughed from the city side. And yet, we also know that we're going to have income that's not coming in from the citizens. And this governing body, I think, needs to weigh both sides of this equation, because that's why we're, that's why we're in office to do so.
I think one of the problems that people are having hardship with as they're calling in and saying, I don't understand why the city of Roanoke's not doing it when other localities are. I really, you know, I don't know what all of the localities are. You know, we do have people that have real estate taxes with the city, but also have real estate taxes with other localities. And they're saying that what they're doing is they're delaying the penalty for like 30 days. And so that's what people are saying that they need to help them is that, you know, for example, we've got people calling in saying that their doctors are telling them to, to get two months' supply of, of their prescriptions. And, you know, it's like this one call I had, she said it was costing her $120, so she was going to have to take part of her real estate payment today. And while she said, you may not think that $60 or $100 is a lot of money, but to her, she only got $883 a month. And so when she says, how come other localities can do it and you can't? It's really hard for me to answer that because I don't have the authority to do that. I can take it case by case. That's what we are trying to do. But that's a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails.
Let me ask you a question, if you can hear me. This is Mayor. What, what are the other local?
It's a mixed bag. I mean, some of them are doing, they're not moving the due date. But they are like saying for the next 30 days, they will forego the 10% penalty as long as it's paid by, you know, the 30 days past their due date. You know, some are just, you know, moving their due dates. The ones that are due like June the 5th, some of them have moved their due date to August the 1st. I do have a survey of all the treasures processed date I could send that out to.
Mr. Mayor, when there's opportunity, I'd like to ask the question of Ms. Powers.
We're, we're going to take the questions. It's still Ms. Davis's floor. But we're going to ask the questions while we're on it and have Ms. Powers present. So go ahead.
Thank you. And I apologize, you guys. I know this is a difficult format because I think, you know, we've all talked individually. And so I know it's a difficult format to have a real conversation when we're each still talking individually. But Ms. Powers, I think the last question that I had, one of the kind of philosophical debates or concerns has been whether moving the date that a fine or fee is imposed, is that effectively the same thing as moving the due date? And I've, again, I've had my own opinion on this, which is that I don't believe it's the same thing. For real estate taxes, a lot of people have their taxes in escrow, they've already been paid. And so I guess my question, I don't want you to answer your philosophical response on that. My question is, do we have an idea of how many people, you gave us the numbers of how much money hasn't been collected so far, but do we have an idea of how many people this is really going to affect? If we had the opportunity to delay the imposition of a penalty by, let's say, a month, do you know how many people that would likely affect today?
I do not. And in the current year in real estate taxes, we, we collect in a normal year about 98% of the taxes. So you're looking at about 2% that I consider are late. They get it paid. Usually in, in May, we send out the delinquent taxes around the 5th of May. Normally, in a normal period, we send out about 4,500 bills. Now, you've got to realize that 4,500, not all of those are delinquent just in the current year. They have other delinquencies. So you know, some of those will extend to people who just, you know, missed the deadline. But on a normal, a normal every six months, it's about 4,500 that we send out. Now, May the 5th, May the 6th, I'll, I'll be able to tell you what those numbers are.
So my final question may be more for the city manager, the city attorney, which would be, would it be possible for us to extend the date that a fee would be imposed on real estate taxes for those accounts that have been in good standing for the past 12 months?
This is Bob. I'm going to, part of your question's budgetary, part of it's legal. So, you know, obviously, I think, and part of it goes to the treasurer's comment regarding workload. I mean, to determine whether somebody's in good standing or not, it depends workload as well. But let me have Dan perhaps give the legal answer to that first, and then maybe I can come back and give you.
And Mayor Lee, I, I'll, I'm done. I won't ask any more questions after this. Thank you all.
Mayor Lee, members of council, this is Dan Kelly again. The issue is, and, and we're talking about the real estate tax right now, according to the survey that Ms. Powers mentioned, less than 6% of the localities were doing anything with regard to the real estate tax. Most localities are, are in the situation that Roanoke finds itself today. That said, colleagues in, in our are discussing with the big vision, said that the legitimate way that we think would be a way to address interest and penalties would be to adopt an ordinance, reducing interest and penalties to zero percent. I do not think you can make a decision to discriminate between taxpayers. And so that all taxpayers would be given that benefit. I also believe that that could be done. And I've thought with some of you about this, could be done on, on April 20th, when you next meet, when we know exactly how many people does not pay. The other thing that, the other step that could be taken, and it did say so apparently, and would start as of tomorrow, is that the treasurer, without any action of council, can determine that the failure to pay a tax does not cause a tax error. And in such event, the treasurer should waive interest and penalties. And I would understand that that may be the case with regard to the fact of the COVID-19 pandemic. To the extent that I've talked with the city administration about this, to the extent that the city, the city treasurer needing additional assistance to process those changes manually could be accomplished through additional staff, obviously, working with treasurer's office, for the work done appropriately, but we would, my office would be assisting the president with regard to this. We recognize the issue. We will have a a better understanding of the situation after today. Because we'll know exactly how many people are delinquent as a result of, are delinquent, and then we can explore what the cause of that delinquency is. I would add one last point, just, just in the context of the president, this only as of March 31, and I shared this information with the office. As of March 31, 2019, when the treasurer's office was charged with collecting some all sorts of irregular real estate, various account, $97 million. The treasurer, as of March 31, 2019, had collected all of $18,500,000. In 2020, as of March 31, 2020, the treasurer was charged with collecting $101 million, $1 million more. And had collected all of $17.5 million. So in effect, the, the accounts were approximately $5 million better this year than last. And as Evelyn just, she shared, it would be just worse, we went on and, and indicating that the second tax bill is approximately $9 million uncollected at this point. That's through 1:00 today. Evelyn extends to all citizens who have mailed their tax bills as of today, their postmark as of today, as being paid, even though she may not receive those payments until later this week or the beginning of next week. And so we have that as a couple of opportunities to address, if you want to know the extent of be glad to answer your question.
And the only thing I'd add to what, what Dan just said, just again, thank you, if I understand for clarification, if there was a an interest in doing that, then in, later in April, at your, your second meeting in April, you would have the opportunity to act on ordinance, which will in effect make that they paid within, I guess we're saying paid within 30 days, then there would be no penalties or fees attached to, to that expenditure. They would apply to obviously anyone that was late after today, if I understand correctly.
That's correct.
And then I, I would also say, as, as Evelyn had pointed to, we're, we're getting ready to obviously mail out personal property tax bills as is required. And generally, those are due May 31st. And as I had talked with a couple of you, if we're anticipating a similar situation, my recommendation, rather than approaching that as any kind of waiver upfront associated with these penalties, would be to extend the deadline of that due date by 30 days. That still allows us to collect it within this fiscal year. So it does not affect our cash flow nor, nor should it affect our collection, but might allow, it allows taxpayers in addition to 30 days to actually generate the, the funds to work, to work with Evelyn regarding an indication they're not going to be able to make that payment and establish a payment plan. But I think those, those two actions would provide the kind of relief I think you are looking for without unnecessarily undermining what it is that we're trying to do in terms of generating enough, collecting enough revenue, that by and large, our taxpayers actually aren't paid, but collect enough revenue to be able to deliver the services that we require and to, and to provide some, some relief for the treasurer's office in terms of tiny those activities may work. So I just, just put those two things out there.
Okay, just one other point, and it's on your agenda, it's like 7th page one, we'll take up after the budget's preparation. It's, we're meeting to discuss matters related to the emergency. One of the emergencies, one of the matters you're taking up as an emergency, based upon the city administration and my office concurrent, is granting to personal property taxpayers the credit that they're entitled to, which is in the aggregate in excess of $8 million. So that the bills will go out, assuming that we adopt that measure later this afternoon, the bills will go out with the full credit extended for all personal property taxpayers. Absolutely. The determination of the emergency, you would not be in a position to do that for that.
I, I also, talking about last point, I also would suggest that if, if there is a continuing concern regarding the ability for individuals to pay in cash, which, like the treasurer has information that she has access to, is a common state, it's a significant minority of our taxpayers. But if there is concern associated with that, and if the treasurer is unsuccessful in securing a location that can handle the cash penalties, we can, if need be, open up the municipal building so that less than 10 individuals can come in at a time and pay in cash. If that's, if that's a concern, I guess my, my request would be, don't forego $26 million of revenue to collect a half million dollars in cash. We can, we can figure out how paid the treasurer is unsuccessful in securing other ways to collect cash.
Just so I let you know, the due date for personal property taxes this year is June the 1st, May 31st falls on the weekend, so it will be June the 1st. But if we can kind of know what your plans might be on that, you know, we need, we really need to get this, the bills to the vendor Wednesday. If we could, it takes them five days to get it. So we were trying to get ahead, because we are getting calls, people wanting to know what they owe because they want to pay it.
I think, and Dan, I guess a question is, if it's the council's, we're finishing this discussion, if it's council preference that we extend the due date for the personal property taxes, it should be for business and for just personal. If we intend on extending that by one month, is what it would be action, would we just make that a part of the ordinance associated with that in April? I mean, I realize you would have, we would have to issue bills, assuming if there's a concurrence, that that's where we're headed. The bills would be issued with added ordinance, we'd put that into effect, if that makes sense. And what I think we do is if it's June 1, we take whatever the first, the first date in July is that falls on actual weekday, I don't have a calendar, I don't know if that's July or whatever it is. But so if you all go through kind of the rest of your discussions, and then I guess I'll back up and say, I know we're asking you a lot of questions here. And this is important, but let's not forget all of the other parts of the budget too, in terms of asking questions as you all go through. Certainly, if you've got a thing relative to an ordinance that you're April 20 meeting that addresses maybe penalties and fees, if a payment plan is established or a payment is made within 30 days, and extending the personal property tax by one month, which whatever day is July or whatever.
Well, I, I suggest, just to get into the fiscal year box, it is May 31, except it's a weekday, June 30 is a weekday, and still we have the same.
Something for you all to consider as you're asking questions and getting kind of finding thoughts and instructions as we go out of the budget discussion.
Well, maybe, let me, Ms. Davis, thank you for your work in this area. And I think I think it's, in the consensus of all council, we want to do something. And I think, I think it's, as a consensus of all council, we want to do something to help our citizens with the deadlines and filing late, late fees, and those things. Let's, let's look at, if it's, let's look at what we have, if we extend the deadline. Let's talk some more about this. Probably, we need to, if anybody, if y'all can hear me, I see you praying, hopefully, because it's difficult hearing, I'm finding in this system, hearing everybody. But I do want to thank you for your effort, and we want to keep working, because I know you're passionate about it, and I think council has also expressed some concern of wanting to do something to help the system. But we want to do it, hopefully, in a way that's financially feasible for all of us. So can we wait, or can we take a look at what the days ahead have for us in terms of the deadline? Ms. Davis, just, I'm just, your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mary Lee. I think personally, that per what Ms. Powers just requested, the sooner, the better. And if it would be possible for us to amend the ordinance that we have later on in our packet today to include an extension of the deadline, I think it would be pertinent to do it ASAP and not wait until the next meeting. I also, you know, one of the things that I feel very strongly about with all of this is not that there are people who have any intention of not paying on time, but I think that as scary and unknown as uncertain as everything is right now for people, we have a lot of people who don't even know what day it is. You know, you've seen a lot of internet memes about it being Groundhog Day, and you wake up, and every single day, you think, oh, my gosh, I have to do this again. And I believe wholeheartedly that what Ms. Powers is going to run up against is a lot of people calling in and saying, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize, I forgot it was today. There's so many other things going on. And I know personally, in my own line of work and in my own personal family situation, I've been very grateful that there have been people out there who have been willing to listen and to understand and to make small changes and amendments to due dates and application dates and different things because of understanding this extreme amount of stress that everybody is on. And so for that reason, I would request, if we are able to, that we amend or have the discussion when it comes up later in the agenda for today, to go ahead and move that penalty, or move that due date for personal property taxes at that time. And that would be my recommendation. With regards to the rest of the budget, I do understand, Mr. Cow, that it is extremely important that we understand the impact this has on the budget as we are considering it right now. It does impact a lot of jobs, it impacts city schools, it impacts our other partners like VVR. And so I do completely understand that this conversation is about a lot more than just these upcoming due dates, but this is also the first time we've had the ability to talk as council about these due dates and how important it is for the citizens, so trying to balance all sides of the equation right now. So I appreciate everyone's time and thought. And Ms. Powers, I appreciate you coming up to chambers in order to have the discussion with us today. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Mary Lee, and thank you, Councilwoman Davis, for addressing that issue of due dates. I also wanted to just emphasize, as we had talked earlier, about our ability to take cash payment. I recognize that the treasurer's office currently has recommended that those who pay cash go get, procure a cashier's check or money order. And I just wanted to recognize that that is certainly challenging under the best of times, and even more so now that there are limited places to go. And also wanted to highlight that cashier's checks and money orders do incur a cost anywhere from $3 to $6 up to $12. So that is an additional cost that a constituent would have to incur to be able to pay in cash. And I heard city manager Bob talk about the possibility of us being open to opening the municipal building, if need be, to collect those cash payments. And I would also like for us to include that in our discussion going forward about the reality of that. I know that that is not a large, our cash paying constituency is not a large percentage of our paying constituency. But we certainly want to make sure that we collect that money, because as we've noted, we need it to run our city. So I just, I wanted to emphasize that as well. And just make the point that we don't budget, we don't include in our budget penalties that we could potentially receive from delayed or late payments. So our ability to extend due dates, to give people the opportunity to either use any kind of tax returns that may be coming to them, any federal stimulus money that may come to make a payment in full, which I believe in good faith that they want to do, is a good thing for us to do as a city and does not necessarily pose any financial detriment to us to be able to do that, since we don't budget.
And Ms. Osborne, just one clarification. Actually, we do have a budget plan that does incorporate those fees and penalties, although the purpose of these penalties is really to try to get payment on real estate tax. So I mean, the objective is to get as much, as close to 100% in payment on real estate payment taxes as we can. Those dollars are budgeted, but obviously, if people pay on time, then it's a wash in your way, which I think is what you were trying to say.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that distinction. I appreciate that. And I guess it's all that I have for now. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of y'all being there, wearing masks for protection and trying to speak through them. It's not easy.
All right, Ms. Bryce.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to say thank you to my colleagues, especially Michelle, for bringing up this item. We certainly all are encountering challenges that we have never anticipated. And I can't tell you enough how personally this has impacted my own family as well. I do think we need to consider what options are available. And to be honest with you, I'm having difficulty understanding some of the things that Dan and Bob have brought up. So I know that we're trying to address the audio in this conversation, but that's my only question that I have right now. If there's some way that we can adjust the audio so that we can hear what the city manager and the city attorney are proposing, because I do feel like there are some options that we should address. And I certainly do convey the sentiments of what Michelle and June have already expressed as far as providing some kind of relief, because there are folks who are struggling, and how to address these deadlines and penalties is something that we certainly need to, we need to convey. Thank you.
And Ms. Bryce, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
It's muffled. It's, and you're coming through, but it's very muffled. Now, when Evelyn and, um, yeah, Amelia, thank you. When they're at the podium, it comes through clearer.
Okay, let me come on there.
Okay, is that better?
Much better.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with the microphone over there. So let me try again to capture what it is that both Dan and I have said in response to some of the conversation you all had so far. So one part of that is, if there is a desire to, for those folks that, you know, of course, the deadline is today, so those folks that are unable, have not paid their real estate taxes today, that by ordinance, you will act on waiving the penalties and fees if those taxes are paid within 30 days. Dan has opined that that is an ordinance that would need to take place, and we can talk about this more, but take place at your next meeting. We, and then tied to that is an extension of the due date for the personal property taxes, which would move from the, basically, the June 1 date to the June 30 date, which would basically allow a month. The taxes are actually due on the 31st, but 31st falls on a weekend. And so that would actually do that piece. We would, if there's concurrence with that approach, what we would do is, the bills that Evelyn referred to would go out with that new due date on them, assuming that then on April 20th, you would enact the ordinance. So we wouldn't wait, in other words, we wouldn't send out a bill that has a due date that, you know, 15 days from now, 14 days from now, you change. We would actually have that correct due date on there. In that instance, of course, that moves at 30 days, and of course, all of your adopted penalties and fees would fall into place if they have not yet paid at that time. All of that falls within this fiscal year, and so that would still work for us. And I think gets to the point Ms. Davis was raising, which is, we don't have to wait for an ordinance to affect that change, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That is exactly what I wanted to make sure, that the clarification was given. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Whiteboy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your last name starting with W, it's just all become a big fog now. But I did have a question for Ms. Powers, so that I can get a full understanding. You said you had $11.4 million to go. That is uncollected. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
That doesn't count, that doesn't count the payments that they're taking after 1 o'clock.
That they're, right, okay. And you said that'll be about 1.2 million?
The 1.2 million is what's left on the very first installment of this fiscal year.
Okay. So, and you said that you believe that in 30 days, we would get 9.4 million could be paid?
I can't guarantee all of it to be paid, but I am having people call and telling me that if they could, you know, if they had the extension. Because some of the problem is, is what they're telling us too, is that they're not getting their unemployment checks yet. You know, they're still waiting on that, so people are relying on that unemployment check to pay their taxes. Listen, people don't want their, especially their personal property taxes to go unpaid because of the holds that happened with DMV on their account. So, you know, they want to get this paid because they also know that at the end of the year, that what doesn't get paid comes out of their state income refunds. So, you know, people are very concerned about that, so they're calling, they're calling right now, wanting to get a payment plan on their, on the personal property. We don't have the bills done yet, so we can't work with them until those bills get processed. Right now, the plan was for those bills to go out Wednesday, so the sooner the better that we can make a decision. I have to get DOT to make the changes, because that's hardcore, and so I need their help to make the changes. And then our vendor, it takes them five days to get everything processed and the bills in the mail.
I certainly agree that you've made your case. I'm just trying to get to an understanding of some of these numbers, because you have definitely made your case. I'm just trying to figure out where these dollars are and how this is going to work out for the residents and for our city and for our budget. And so when you mentioned 9.4 million can be paid in 30 days, or possibly, you're hoping that that could be paid within 30 days. Do we have a breakdown on which category, which these taxes are for, the 9.4? Do you know where they're coming from?
The 9.4 is the second installment of real estate. The 1.2 is the first, is what's left on the first installment. So what's, so you could be delinquent the whole year right now, and that, you know, would be part of the total that I gave you.
Okay. And you said about 63,000 cash payments would come in?
63,000 personal property bills is what we're getting, we're working on right now. These are the personal property bills that we are generating.
Okay, because I thought I heard cash payments for some reason. And that's why I'm asking these questions, because I was trying to take notes.
I don't have my paperwork with me, but cash payments, we ran a report last year, March 1 of 2019, through June 30 of 2019, we took in $1.5 million in just cash. Those were our cash deposits that went into the bank.
And that was what period, during what?
March 1 through June 30. No, we have finished the March 1 deadline. March 1 is your business license deadline. And we've collected a good bit of that already.
Do you have an estimate of how much is outstanding for cash payments? I guess I'm trying to figure out whether or not it's feasible to open up the municipal building to collect those cash payments. I'm just trying to figure out how much is left outstanding.
Well, I could go back and look at April through June to see what the difference was.
But, yeah, you can send that to me later. You don't, we don't have, we're not going to spend any time on it now. I'm just trying to figure out where we are, because it was difficult in the beginning hearing, and I think it's a lot better now, we can hear and we can understand. So I'm just trying to catch up and make sure I understand what we're doing. And basically, the recommendation would be from our city attorney and from the city manager is to wait until April 20, because then we would have a better idea of how much money has been collected thus far. Was that the recommendation from you, Mr. Cow?
That's the recommendation, but not for that reason. The recommendation is for the reason that's as soon as you can entertain an ordinance. So that would be the reason. Now, the exception, again, on the personal property piece is we believe administratively, we can give the treasurer the instructions that we've talked about, which is, as the bills are prepared, that they reflect the new date that they will be due, that we all are talking about. So, yeah.
Okay.
So there's two different, one requires the, well, both require an ordinance, but one is immediate, the other one, we can take care of in the printing process as we go through.
Okay, thank you. I'm good now. Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor.
All right. I know we've gone all the way around, but I was not addressing this issue during my comments, so I appreciate an opportunity to talk about it now. Let me say, first of all, that I've always considered one of the most important principles of government is to be fair, to be fair with everybody. We don't have one set of rules for certain people and then another set of rules for different people. So in the spirit of fairness, I want to say that the next time we're going to go through and give everybody a chance to comment or ask questions, maybe we should start with reverse alphabetical order, so that I don't have to be first all the time, and Ms. Whiteboy doesn't have to be last. I just think that would be fair. And I think it is totally fair to adjust the due date for the personal property tax in advance of the bills going out. I support that 100%. I think that if we had known a month or two ago where we were going to be, we could have made some arrangement as far as the real estate tax due date. But the due date is the last day before anyone incurs a penalty. So if you move the date when you're going to incur the penalty, you're moving the due date. Whatever you want to call it, you're moving the due date. And the fairness comes in for the fact that a lot of people have already paid. If they had known that they weren't going to get a penalty on April 7, many of them would have decided, well, I'm going to hold on to my money for another 30 days, and I'll pay it in May instead of paying it in April. So I just, I want to make sure that we're fair with everybody and that the treasurer, as I understand it, and Ms. Powers, if you're still there, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, you have the authority right now, and have always had the authority, to waive penalties and interest on anybody for a valid reason in your discretion. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So anybody who comes after today and says, the owner is not paying taxes because I have paid in cash and I didn't have an opportunity, there wasn't a way for me to bring the cash. And I certainly think it's very feasible for us to announce that the municipal building will be open only for those persons who must bring cash. And obviously, we've got to have adequate security in place, and we've got to make sure that we don't allow more than 10 people in at a time, and all those sorts of things. But that can all be worked out. And if that's the case, then knowing Ms. Powers since before she ever became the treasurer of our fair city, I'm quite sure that she- I'm quite sure that she would give anybody the benefit of waiving penalties and interest if that is their situation. And so I I I think, again, that is the best way to be fair to everyone. Um, I I'm really concerned about the whole situation with the trust taxes. The the trust taxes are not paid by the by the businesses or their employees. The trust taxes are paid by the customers. The businesses collect the trust tax. And then they're required to remit it the following month. If they're using those dollars for other purposes anytime, that I think creates a real concern. If they're having trouble paying what they should pay this month and their business is down, and we give them a two or three month uh, payment plan, are they going to be in even more trouble another month from now? Because they haven't been generating the business that they usually generate and making it even more difficult. So I I I'm just not sure that we're doing anybody any favors. Uh, and and I'm I'm really perplexed as to what a lot of these other localities may be thinking that was mentioned earlier. But I would remind us all that, uh, just a few months ago, there were a lot of localities passing resolutions regarding the constitution that we did not feel was necessary to pass. And I think we were right about that. So the fact that all a lot of other localities are doing this, that, or the other is not necessarily a persuasive argument, uh, where I'm concerned. Uh, I I I do think that we we need to be as equitable and and consistent as we can. And as I say, I I fully support, uh, moving out the due date on the personal property to the end of June. That still allows us to collect it within this fiscal year. Uh, and I really think that that's, uh, that's as far as we should go at this particular time.
Mayor, if I can, um, if if I can just clarify, because I don't believe that anything we've talked about, and I just want to make sure certain this is the case. I think what we've talked about so far is dealing with the the penalties and fees attached with delinquent real estate bills or tax revenue. So we talked about that. And we've talked about delaying the due date for the personal property tax. Um, we certainly are not recommending, and I don't believe any of the council members have suggested any change relative to the trust taxes beyond that which the treasurer customarily addresses in terms of um, payment plans or any of those kinds of things. And I just want to make sure that that's that's indeed the case.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
That's my position. So, uh, before I just make my one comment from on this section of fiscal year in general. What, uh, so, what's the best picture? Are you are you stating that you are supporting, make sure that people get their bills on the personal property taxes uh, prior to, uh, July, the end of June? Uh, but you really left on you, we you, in your opinion, it wouldn't be fair to go back and and extend the real estate tax fee. Is that is that what I'm hearing you saying? Yes, sir. I I'm saying we can send out the bills for personal property tax to everybody at the same time, letting everybody know when the new due date is, that we've extended the due date. Everybody gets the same information at the same time. And that is 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 fair across the board. Um, so I I support that. And I think what I'm understanding is if there's consensus or or hopefully not even any objection among any members of council at this point, we could direct them to go ahead and and, uh, process the bills to go out on that basis and then take the formal action to retroactively reaffirm that action, I guess, on on our April twenty meeting. So, uh, you know, that's still before, uh, the due date for anybody. Okay, all right, uh. Let me just ask Amelia, and I think she mentioned it, but when will when will we know about where we will be, where we are with with the state funding, if anything, is it? As though where they don't probably don't know themselves, uh, with regards to that, but will that affect, it it will affect our budget, but how far can we go, uh, without knowing what's going to happen?
We do not have any indication from the state at this point that there will be an adjustment to that revenue. Um, a good portion of the revenues that were referenced in an earlier slide of the, I believe seventeen million dollars, we typically don't receive until the last month of the fiscal year. So it it can go out to the very end of the fiscal year where we have very little options in terms of how we could overcome a revenue shortfall that the state causes.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Since we have Amelia there, can I ask a question because, um, I didn't get, the narrative changed before I could get my question about the budget?
All right, go ahead and ask your question, Ms. Ms. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Amelia, do you have any idea, um, what monies would be allocated to, um, localities from the CARES Act aside from, um, what was, um, uh, I guess allocated through the CDBG grant and the ESG grant? Is there any other monies out there that's from the CARES Act that you think we might receive? I know that's kind of a generic question, but I was just wondering if we might be able to expect or look for any money from CARES Act.
Yeah, I've I just stepped in, but Amelia's standing next to me, so, um, the, no, we we don't know the answer to that yet. As you all know, um, we had, along with all of the other municipalities in Virginia and many throughout the country, have advocated for direct funding from the federal government to municipalities rather than money sent to the states and then the states figuring out how to actually provide that to the municipalities. That did not make it into the act. And so what we're now waiting for is instructions from the state as to how they will allocate those funds. And and also what restrictions, if any, come with the federal funding. So no, the only the only funding identified so far is that funding you alluded to, which is our increase in our CDBG and ESG or the, uh, the homeless prevention, um, funding. Those are the only two pots so far that have been identified. Um, it is pretty certain, almost without exception, that the funding that comes from the state um, will not be able to be used to make up lost revenue. Um, that's that's been pretty clear that, um, all the municipalities have concluded that based off of the act. So more than likely, the money that comes from the state will come for specific purposes rather than trying to make up that, for example, that nine million dollar shortfall that we just identified. And we haven't seen, um, what that is. And undoubtedly, it will probably occur after the fiscal year anyway, so.
So would that be the same thing with that, um, HB five nine nine, a a reduction in that monies? Would it be because the state's holding it or is it because of something? It's not because of something we've done to meet the criteria.
Yeah, in any of those categories that Amelia mentioned in the, um, in the presentation, whether that's comp board readjustment or the HB five ninety nine funding, those would be funding that is um, owed, if you will, um, by the state to us either for reimbursement, well, for reimbursement, really, um, with all of those. And they may use those funds to balance their budget because where we have a nine million dollar revenue shortfall, they have at least a billion dollar revenue shortfall. And so that's one of our concerns.
Okay, that's why that's on that list. I was just wondering. Thank you, Bob.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Lee. May I just ask one more question, please, or or clarify a question or a comment that I brought up earlier?
This is your budget session. Go ahead.
Thank you. And just in terms of cash collection, what would be the impetus for, uh, the city to, um, to address that in such a way as to reopen the municipal building? And what would, what would that look like? What would be required?
Um, if you, and the only impetus for it really is if you're, um, I'll just be, I'll be direct and say, if you're going to make a twenty six million dollar decision, for example, because if we can't collect a half a million dollars, we'll figure out a way to collect the half million dollars to protect the twenty six million. Um, the treasurer has made all kinds of arrangements for folks to be able to pay who might otherwise pay for cash. But we understand there may be some folks who can only pay in cash. And, um, so mechanically, what it would involve is simply unlocking the doors and having security present and a protocol of how folks would be able to come in, frankly, not much different than what the retail outlets are doing. Uh, the treasurer has attempted to find other ways in which people can make cash, um, payments, and she will still continue to do that. Those have not yet really resulted in anything, um, in terms of any kind of final, um, action. So, um, you know, part of that is to go back to some of the earlier conversations, which is to see where we are at the end of this collection period to figure out, you know, are we are we that far off from where we typically would be? It may not be worth trying to open, but again, if not taking cash payments causes us or you all to make a larger decision, we'll figure out a way to take cash payments.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Amelia, I bet. Anything else that you bring forth?
I think the only, the only thing I'll do, and then we'll switch over to the FY twenty one budget, is, um, since apparently our microphones off on the side aren't working for you all, um, I just want to, um, because this is applicable for FY twenty one as well. I want to restate sort of the the objectives that we're using in trying to balance um, this year's budget and in the preparation of next year's budget. So I'm just going to read through these again. Um, one of those is, again, to continue to fund for, um, and provide essential services. I've already explained previously that that includes all the support services necessary for those frontline, um, employees that you typically would associate with essential services. Do no harm to the FY twenty one budget. And when we get in the FY twenty one discussion, you'll hear us say the same thing. Do no harm for the FY twenty two budget. And we'll explain what that means as we go through. Um, protect staff resources. As I mentioned, we are a people-based, um, organization. Uh, all of the services that we deliver are delivered by people. Um, and therefore, obviously, if we're going to continue to provide services, we need to continue to have people as well. If we're going to reopen anything, um, let's say, uh, hopefully in July, we get to reopen facilities, we need to have people to be able to reopen those facilities. Uh, I already mentioned prepare for FY twenty two, and the reason for that is because I fully anticipate that this will ultimately ripple through to real estate values. Um, remember, we will be doing a reassessment in FY twenty one, um, like we do every year. And I think the businesses, um, that are out there and the property owners that are of commercial properties will obviously be able to demonstrate that the value of their property may not be the same as what it is today and are certainly not increasing. And so ultimately, that will follow through with, um, with real estate values. Whereas, of course, you all know, the last three years, we've been beneficiaries of increasing property values. We obviously want to be able to be in a position to help the community actually recover. It's already been alluded to, the funding that's coming from the federal government, and I don't believe we're probably done with more federal funding. You're going to need, most of that funding will come through the state to us. And in many cases, we then turn around and provide it to source stability for nonprofits or for profit. Um, and we need to make sure that we have, um, the facilities and the resources able to do that. And then, of course, um, my last point was that we'll balance this budget, or at least what I will present to you all for FY twenty one, will be balanced on what we project to be revenues and expenditures and not based on what we might or might not get from the federal government. And if we get additional resources from the federal government, that will allow us to either restore things that had to be cut or it will allow us to actually respond to the recovery, um, rather than trying to balance the budget. I think it would be a critical error to assume that we're going to be rescued by, um, federal funding in order to balance our budget. It's just not, um, not prudent for us to do that. So since I know the microphone wasn't working, I wanted to make sure that those kind of objectives were listed, um, for you all so that you knew what those were. And again, hold valid, those hold valid with FY twenty two, just put, or FY twenty one, just put FY twenty two in front of some of those numbers, um, that we've identified. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Amelia and we're going to start the discussion um, where we had, um, sort of been, um, a year or a year, a month ago. And I think the key in the next slide that you're going to, or one of the next slides that you're going to see is pay attention to what has occurred just in a single month um, that has required us to basically completely rethink our budget, um, and what we're going to submit and why we've moved um, the budget, um, over to, or why we've moved the budget schedule so that we'll be seeking approval in June. So I'm gonna let Amelia pick that up and then I'll jump in here at time.
Thank you, Amelia.
Hi, um, I believe we want to start our discussion on slide eight. As we continue our discussions and we turn our attention to fiscal twenty one, um, we're beginning our discussion with the local tax discussion. And it's projected that with the impacts felt in the fourth quarter of fiscal twenty due to COVID nineteen, those will continue into the first, second, and potentially the third quarters of fiscal twenty one. Depending on which local tax we're looking at and how quickly we're projecting it might rebound within the economy. These projections are presumptive of how soon COVID nineteen will dissipate and how business and consumer behaviors might rebound as well. This volatile, volatively volatility is evidenced in the reduction by six point two six million between March second and April sixth, as you see evidenced on the total column of slide eight. We assume several characteristics of the rebound or the decline for the first, second, or third quarter as we look at our individual local taxes. For real estate, we assume four point two six percent growth. You might recall as we were, uh, looking at real estate growth after the assessment post appeals, the projection was four point six three percent. And we are reducing that based on potential collectibility over the first six months of the fiscal year, as well as collectibility throughout the rest of the fiscal year as well. Sales tax assumes that activity slowly rebounds with sixty percent of prior year activity as soon as July, which represents Sept, I'm I'm sorry, as soon as September, which represents July and climbs to a hundred percent by January, which actually represents November sales tax. Transient occupancy assumes a very slow recovery with ten percent of prior year activity starting in August collections with growth through May at fifty percent and growth beyond, given the timeframe necessary to recoup conference activity that was canceled. Prepared food and beverage assumes forty percent activity level beginning with August collections and growth back to normal levels by December. Cigarette tax has been declining and the estimate reflects an overall decline of approximately seven percent. Motor vehicle license has been declined slightly based on anticipated less collectibility. Communications tax has been declining and the estimate reflects an overall decline of approximately eleven percent. Personal property reflects a current estimate of two percent growth over the adopted budget. We are in communications with the Commissioner of Revenues Office to refine that final number over the next week. Business license reflects a growth rate of about four point eight percent estimate over the adopted budget for fiscal twenty. That's partially due to the collections for fiscal twenty and assessments, along with a one percent growth assumption. Additionally, other revenues such as district taxes through delinquent taxes shows a slight increase of approximately two percent. Over the coming weeks, with the closure of the month of March and monitoring of the revenues received in April, these figures will be revised as appropriate. We will also monitor updates from the Commonwealth of Virginia and work collaboratively with neighboring jurisdictions to share information. Moving to slide nine. For the month of April, other non-local tax revenues are estimated to surpass the fiscal twenty adopted budget by approximately six hundred and twenty seven thousand for an estimated general fund total or price of government today of approximately two hundred and ninety nine point six million dollars. And that is just a zero point zero seven percent increase over the current year adopted budget. On slide ten, as we stood before you last month, we were approximately. As we stood before you last month, we were approximately one point seven million dollars out of balance. That number, of course, is larger today. Our strategies, our approach must change. We know that there are nondiscretionary cost increases that must be funded. Affecting areas such as community safety. Utilities, tipping fees, areas such as those. We recognize that the compensation increase is no longer feasible. Our task is now to review and fund the highest base and supplemental priority services and programs. The difficult recommendations regarding basic expenditure reductions is before us. And must be undertaken over the next several weeks. This will not be easy, but it is necessary. On slide eleven. As we all know, circumstances seem to be changing daily. As an administrative team, we are preparing a staged contingency plan. In the event that revenues received are lower than the already severely decrease decreased projections. As was mentioned previously, daily, weekly, monthly monitoring of revenues and expenditures. Will be occurring with a goal of quarterly determination of necessary expenditure adjustments. Based on the reality that unfolds during fiscal year twenty twenty one. On slide twelve. Want to just bring back to our attention. Two items that we also are responsible for as we balance the budget for fiscal twenty one. Over the next several months, that will lead us to year in activities for the current fiscal year, including a sixty day accrual period. Revenues and expenditures will be recognized for fiscal twenty. And ultimately, we will update the status of the unassigned fund balance and the stabilization reserve. In the event of unforeseen declines in revenue in a specific fiscal year. Policy indicates for which there is no other current budgetary resource available. The policy itself allows for utilization of either of those to address such a shortfall. Such use would require city council authorization and the balances per the policy. Must be restored within three fiscal years to its minimal level. Given the expenditure planning that has taken place with contingencies as a priority in the event of revenue underperformance. We are hopeful that neither utilization would be necessary. Our goal is to prepare the fiscal year budget with a five year view. That recognizes resources and highest priority services. Per the policy, the unassigned fund balance and stabilization reserve. Are valuable resources in a severe crisis. However, they are not intended to be used for the purposes of balancing the budget. We'll further report, of course, on both of these as the fiscal year closes and the year end results come forward. We are fortunate, given the stressors on the current fiscal year budget, that as you can see on slide thirteen. As a starting point, the unassigned fund balance stands at thirty six point one million dollars or twelve point two percent. The stabilization reserve stands at three point four million dollars or one point two percent. We continue to work, work towards the target of fully funding the stabilization reserve. By fiscal twenty twenty three at three percent. And to maintain the unassigned fund balance at twelve point two percent or higher. Moving forward to slide fourteen. Just want to say in closing, in terms of our balancing next steps. The revenue estimate review and expenditure revisions will continue. As we move forward to our budget briefing next for May fourth. Subsequent presentation of the recommended budget on May eighteenth. The public hearings on May twenty eighth. June first budget study and the June fifteenth budget adoption date. Again, we'll pause here for additional comments and questions.
Mayor, I'll just um add kind of just as part of the conclusion. So obviously. What you have in front of you is the the revised schedule, and I believe it's our intent to at your next meeting. Is that today? Oh, under item ten, sorry. Um, under item number ten, we'll be adopting the um. Uh, the revised schedule. So everyone will have that, but that's so that we can move. Um, again, through those items, and that will also allow us. The the opportunity to um continue for whatever a month or two's time allows us to continue to see. If those estimates and projections that we've started put together seem to be um proving to be valid and accurate. Um, the the last thing I'll say, and again, I know you all know this because you you've. Looked at the graphs that Amelia has explained um as you go through, but the reality is. That very likely for the conclusion of FY twenty. For what the FY twenty one budget will be, and again, probably the FY twenty two budget. You, I would not expect to see anything substantive in the way of growth in revenue. In effect, best case scenario is a flat budget, probably for two to three years. Worst case scenario is I see a decline in FY twenty two on the revenue side. However, of course, like everyone else, expenses will not remain flat. And so. That's why, even though when you look at our FY twenty one numbers. And you look at that and you say, well, the budget's flat, so you know, we're in a good shape. Well, the the problem is with the lost revenue that we have. We know we have expenses that are going up fairly dramatically. Um, you know, there's examples for like the the healthcare and the jail, for example, is one, but there are many, many others. That we have to actually cut into our base in order to be able to absorb. Those increases in those expenditures. That will again be true in FY twenty two. And um, and again, we're holding, the last point I'll make is the one reinforced what Amelia just said, which is. We're holding on any type of use of that um stabilization fund. In the event that one of those assumptions that we've made, particularly about state revenue. Um, proves to be in inaccurate, and then we've got those funds. That if need be, we could draw upon, but again, keep in mind. The stabilization fund only offers the equivalent of, you know, not even quite a um payroll period. So I mean, the. The dollars that they're not going to, Amelia said, they're not intended to balance the budget. They're there to absorb. Something that is manageable in a one-time shock. That ultimately, we've got to pay back anyway over the next three years as we go forward. So. Uh, which is all the more reason why we're trying to balance, why we will balance the budget. Um, off of the anticipated revenues and by managing our expenditures. And not relying either on the fund balance or on the federal funding. Um, we'll we'll deal with those if they um if they ultimately come. So at this point. Um, certainly, Mayor, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. As it relates to the FY twenty one budget and or the schedule that we've um developed for that um for that budget.
Thank you. Amelia, thank you. Bob, let me start with uh this white boy.
Thank you, Mayor. This this will be easy. I just want to say thank you to Amelia and her staff. For um this information and for for these reports, they were very um very concise. I only had a few questions that I sent to um the city manager yesterday. And he responded quickly with the three questions that I did have. Um, so I appreciate that, and I had actually had my monthly meeting on Friday, so I got a lot of my questions answered on Friday and and the ones I didn't get answered. He answered for me yesterday um afternoon, and I thank you for doing that, Bob, taking time out of your Sunday evening. To respond to me the way you did. So I I'm I'm good, um, Mayor, with with uh everything that has been presented. So. I'll go ahead and let you move on.
Thank you. Ms. Price.
Uh, I have no questions. I just want to express also my. Appreciation to Amelia and to Bob and to Dana, to everyone. Uh, during these very difficult times, and let's just pray that we will come out on the other side. Thank you for all that you guys are doing and stay safe.
No, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mary Lee. Um. I do not have any specific questions regarding the remainder of our budget briefing. I just want to say thank you again, as others have to. Um, to staff for working so hard through this diligently. And um. As they continue to advise us on what. We'll need to make forward. Um, I'm looking forward to that, and um again, I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mary Lee. Um. I don't know that I have any questions either, other than it did strike me, listening to this today. That, you know, this council has been in this position for many years, not the same position, but in a position of. Um, budget shortfalls, um, coming out of the recession, the economy was really slow to recover, and it's only been within the past year or two. That we've actually had any, any, um, you know, we've seen any positive um. Returns on our budget and on on where we're at at the end of each fiscal year. And so, you know, I know that. We are not being affected by this as a local government. In any way that is really all that much different from every citizen. That elect us to the positions that we sit in right now. And so the tough decisions are the same tough decisions that are having to be made in individual households right now. Um, I know that it's going to affect us for a long time, and uh, and I do think that there are some ideas coming down the pike. That will be really important with regards to economic development and opportunity here within the course of the next couple of years. Um, and so I just really am grateful for the staff. I know that everybody is putting in tireless hours. Um, Amelia, I'm sure your department is just absolutely. Exhausted, as is the city manager and the city attorney, because as Ms. White Boy said. You know, they've been willing to talk to us at all hours of the day and night and have conversations with all of us individually and repeating themselves multiple times, I'm sure. So. Just a big thank you. Um, and I do truly believe that we are all in this together as a community. Um, and that, and that we will, we will come out of this um eventually, having. Learned a lot from it and made some really tough decisions, undoubtedly so, but. I'm just grateful for the amount of work and effort that every single person. That's spoken today um has put into this so far and will continue to do. So thank you all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cox. I can't hear you. Bob, is it, is it me?
Oh, you're muted, Joe.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Amelia, Bob, um, all of our city staff, everyone who's out doing. Uh, so much to continue our essential services. Everyone is facing challenges that Councilwoman. Davis just described perfectly. Uh, we're all facing this uh in so many, on so many different levels. Uh, I I do want to thank um members of the community, whether they are. Uh, citizens just going about their daily lives or small business owners, restaurant owners, uh, people who are trying to navigate. What has happened in terms of tourism, our hotels, uh, even our. Uh, you know, folks who are homeless and and the city's working hard to try and find um. Uh, residential accommodations for them. Um, in addition to what's already being provided, everything is so mu- so multifaceted and so interconnected. And I I want to thank everyone who. Has paused long enough to thank um folks who are doing this work because it's all of us who are doing it. Uh, the decisions that we're making are, as you've indicated, Amelia. Um, based on information we have and on um information we can project. But even within that is an unpredictability. And an unknown that we are just going to live with for a while. Uh, so I appreciate colleagues uh and um citizens in the city. Uh, who recognize this and who understand this and who are also extremely creative. And I would just uh uh offer that if there are folks in the community that that you're hearing about creative opportunities that are happening in other places. Share those with us as your elected officials. Um, so that we can, we can look into those. Um, I I don't think it's, it's a lack of desire or willingness to explore creative opportunities. Um, but all of us are kind of pulled to the extreme right now in terms of. With what we're able to do. So anything that you can do to share with us, your ideas. Um, and and how we can approach them even more creatively. I think we are all open to that, and so. Um, again, kudos, Amelia. Uh, thank you for uh the extraordinary work that you're doing and to all of our. Our city staff. Um, we're proud of you. We're grateful for you, and um, thank you all.
All right, Councilwoman Bispiach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and I also thank uh. Amelia and all of her staff, as well as Bob and the entire entire city workforce, because. Uh, it certainly has been very difficult. To make all these adjustments in the projections for next year's budget. You know, it was only five weeks ago and it seemed like it's been an awfully fa- long five weeks, but it really has only been five weeks ago since. We were looking at this situation and thinking, well, we're in pretty good shape this year. But pretty good shape really meant that we were just finally getting back in terms of. Inflation adjusted dollars to where we were before the two thousand eight recession. So uh, this is, this is not going to spec again, a little bit as has already been pointed out. Uh, and I know that in addition to. The the budget process, there's been a lot of extra work, a lot of people doing extra things to make sure. That we continue to provide the services that our citizens need and expect and. That we take some special precautions. To keep everyone as safe as we possibly can. To get through this together, as I know we will, and to come out on the other end. Uh, as soon as we possibly can do it. Uh, in terms of the specific items you just shared with us. On the slide number ten, the strategies dealing to budget adoption. Uh, I understand that we are not in a position at this point to offer a uh. An increase in compensation. But are we still able to say that we can. Cover any increases in employee benefits so that uh. So that we don't increase the, their share of any benefits uh in the next fiscal year?
Um, right now, the numbers that we're working with incorporate, as we do in most our years, some amount of cost associated with that. Um, we won't know the answer to that yet. I mean, obviously, one of our objectives, remember those. Those objectives that I laid out where I said, you know, one of them is to preserve. That uh, those staff resources that we have, that's a part of it, but. Um, I can't certainly guarantee that going forward, especially depending on the way um some of these assumptions may play out, but. Right now, we've built into the budget, just as we had previously. A certain amount of growth with health insurance um that we would be able to absorb. Last year, that covered the entirety of it, so we would hope that that could still be the case this year. Um, the other unknown with that one, obviously, is I have no idea. And I doubt anyone in the health insurance industry does as well, how this whole pandemic is even going to affect. The cost of health insurance, um, which could change fairly dramatically what that bill um might be and well outpace what we have set aside. So. Um, short answer is, if everything stays the same, we've got it covered. Nothing is the same, so we'll figure out as we go along, we're able to keep doing that, but that's certainly one of our, one of our objectives.
Well, I I I understand, and I just uh, I just wanted to give my. Personal support, but I know we're we're in a hiring freeze situation, except for public safety and other. Critical positions. That always means that somebody's going to have to pick up the slack. If a position goes unfilled, then somebody else gets a little bit more of a workload. Uh, in addition to that, I I really hope that we can maintain. The permanent full-time staff resource that we do have. And that we do not get into a situation where we have to furlough some of our workers. Uh, I I know we can't guarantee that that won't happen. But it certainly is my hope that we do everything possible to prevent that. I realize that we have some part-time folks who are. Uh, generally hired for programs that aren't even operating right now, so so they're not going to be coming on board. We have some seasonal. Uh, workers that uh are not part of our regular. Full-time permanent workforce that that may not be needed for various reasons. But for everybody else, I I really hope we do everything that we possibly can to keep them on board. Uh, I'm very impressed by what was said at the end about using the stabilization. Funds, reserves, only if absolutely necessary, only to make up shortfalls and not to say going forward for. Uh, fiscal year twenty one, we're going to plan on using some of that money upfront. Just to balance the budget that we want to have and provide all the services that we we think people need. Because doing that really helps to protect our our credit rating with the, with the agencies and and doing things that. Would damage that in any way or even run the risk of damaging it. Can knock us back in terms of those uh. Those credit ratings. can knock us back in terms of those, those credit ratings and ended up costing us a lot of money in the long run for increases in our capital projects. So, it took a long time for us to see a really pretty modest increase in our credit rating, a modest improvement. It doesn't take anything, any time at all for them to knock that back down again. So, I think that's very prudent. And the last thing I'd say, Mr. Mayor, is just in terms of, of people who may be struggling with whatever tax might be due. You know, if your real estate bill is $500 and you don't, you only have $250, I think there's a tendency on some folks' part to say, well, I don't have the 500, so I just can't pay it. So, pay what you can, pay what you can. Because if you owe 500 and you pay 250, the penalty on the other 250 is a lot less than the penalty on the whole 500. So, work with the treasurer. She's really indicated that she wants to work with people, she wants to set up payment plans and, and do the best that you can, and that will help us all to get through this sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bestbitch. Let me also thank Amelia and your staff for what you've done and what you will be doing as we go forward. It's a tremendous amount of work and given the circumstances that we're all facing, we all are involved in crises that we haven't seen before. And it not only is affecting us as, as people in this community, but in terms of the things that we're trying to work through, it makes it difficult. It's like a cloud hanging over our heads. But I want to thank you all for that, and I want to thank council for your leadership and courage in making the decisions that we've had to make, we're making decisions that we think are in the best interest of our city. And that, you know, we still have issues that are going to come forth, but I think we're headed in the right direction. I think the things that are going on in our community, and, and let me just say, we talked a lot today about the economy, which is important. But also, as we noticed, that healthcare is, is something that, that really challenges all of us. And so, I want to encourage you to keep the faith, stay strong, maintain that courage and leadership that you've shown. All of us are going to have to make some tough decisions down the line, one way or the other, not only in the city, but I think in terms of as we go about personally, making some tough decisions. But thank you all for that. Let's stay the course. I believe that social distancing is making a difference. I think it's making a difference from what I can see, talking about the curve. And I talked to some of my other mayor colleagues in other cities and I'm, I'm confident that, that, that the things that we've done are the things that people feel across the country that has to be done in times such as these. So, thank you all and let's keep moving forward. And let me ask just one further thing on the budget to either Bob or Dan. The, can we do the budget or because of not knowing what our circumstances may be, can the budget be approved, I think, without a public hearing? Is that still, can, is that still on the table, given where we are?
We will still be conducting the public hearing as required. We will likely be conducting it in some fashion electronically, like what we've been doing here. So, no, you're still obligated to conduct that, that hearing. We will still go through with that if we're unable to meet in person. And, you know, that's some of the discussion I know all the attorneys across the state are having as to exactly how to, to go about doing that. That's one more reason perhaps to have a little bit of time and to, to make sure that folks have ample opportunity to participate.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the items that have been recommended for action. Are you, are we still, Amelia, I see you at the, at the mic. Are you, have more information, Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Authorization to establish a percentage reduction for personal property tax relief for the 2020 tax year. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Trish White Boy.
Second, this Anita Price.
Right. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution setting the allocation percentage for personal property tax need in the city of Roanoke for the 2020 tax year and determining that an emergency exists and this resolution will be effective upon passage.
All right. Any questions or comments from members of council? Hurrying on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the resolution passes. Thank you unanimously, should I say. But item number two is execution of amendment number five to the city's contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated to provide necessary maintenance and support for the newly implemented systems. There is a resolution. So, Bestbitch, move the resolution.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
All right, you, you have that, Madam Clerk, it broke up on my end, but you had, do have that in second.
Yes. Remember, Bestbitch move second by Vice Mayor Cobb.
Okay. Please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of an additional amendment to the city's contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for maintenance and support for the computer-aided dispatch hardware and software to the new V8 811 slash E911 communications center. Authorizing the city manager to take such actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to provide for the implementation, administration, and enforcement of such amendment to the above-mentioned contract as well as the contract itself and determining that an emergency exists and this resolution shall be effective upon passage.
Okay. Any comments or questions, Vice, City Council? Hurrying on, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the resolution passes. Thank you. I'm pleased to recognize now our city manager, Mr. Bob Cowell.
Sorry.
Did you hear that, Bob?
I did not. Sorry, I just walked back in.
Oh, okay. Well, you up.
That was it for the manager's comment. Sorry. Well, I don't have any manager's comments, so that makes it really easy. So, thank you.
Okay. Item number eight is report of committed, we have none, any unfinished business, we have none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We've ordered an ordinance to approve the revised budget schedule. Done that. All right, is there, there's an ordinance.
I move the ordinance. Go ahead, Trish.
Trish White Boy, move the ordinance.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read title paragraph?
Be a second.
We need a second.
I'll second. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Right, ma'am, Vice, I'm missing.
Yes, I will read the ordinance. An ordinance approving and endorsing the revised budget schedule for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget presented by the city manager on April 6, 2020, pursuant to ordinance number 41703-032720 and Virginia Code, Section 15.2 dash 1413, authorizing the city manager to take such actions necessary to implement the revised budget schedule, determining that an emergency exists, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Are there any questions or comments by members of council? Hurrying on, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, the vote is unanimous and the ordinance passes. But we have a walk-on item. Ordinance number 41703-032270, which was previously adopted by City Council on March 27, 2020, is hereby supplemented to include provisions to address deadlines under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And I will, Ms. Callahan, do you want to address this or you want us to just move forward?
If you move in second, then we can discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, go. Bestbitch, I move the ordinance.
Anita Price, I second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An emergency ordinance effectuating the temporary changes in the deadlines for responding to requests for records under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act during the current state of emergency and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Okay. Callahan, can you just share with us a little bit about this ordinance, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you adopted an ordinance back on March 27 that allowed for certain emergency actions for the continuity of government. And one of the issues that has arisen is, as you might expect, is, is our timing and our response to FOIA requests. Under state code, we have to make an initial response within five business days. And then, we have some additional time with regard to that with the fact that many members of city staff are working remotely and therefore may not have access to paper records that could provide a response. And, and for other challenges that are being faced by several departments and trying to respond to everything, this measure, if adopted, clerk supplements the March 27 ordinance to allow, to suspend the FOIA deadlines that are in, in the code. We would still set up a policy of responding to citizens in a timely manner, explaining our, what our needs are and working on that. But that would protect us in terms of responding to FOIA requests that we receive on a regular basis.
All right, any other questions or comments from members of council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I, I have another walk-on and thanks to my staff, although we have to make a correction. And I will mark it up and, and before the clerk reads it. But what I would suggest, folks who are working, is to address the issue of the personal property tax, which the city clerk, which the city manager and the city treasurer have discussed. I would propose an amendment, amending and reordaining the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended by amending section 32, hang on, dash 105, when due and payable, Article 3, Article on tangible personal property taxes generally, Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this titled by ordinance, second reading of this ordinance by title. What this would do, and let me tell you what it does, and then someone can move that. It would amend section 32 point dash 105 of City Code to provide that the, the code currently reads, annual city taxes imposed on all classes of tangible personal property pursuant to section 32104 shall be due and payable at the office of the treasurer on or before the 31st day of May in each year, and all such taxes shall be paid on or before such date in order to avoid penalty as provided in section 32106. Provided, and what is new is provided, however, for all classes of tangible personal property pursuant to section 304, due on May 31, 2020. The due date is extended from May 31, 2020 until June 30, 2020. With that said, I would ask that someone move in second and then the clerk can read the title again.
So, Bestbitch, I move your ordinance.
Cheryl Davis, and I second the ordinance.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
Yes, an ordinance amending and reordaining the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended by amending section 32 dash 105, when due and payable, Article 3, Tax on Tangible Personal Property Taxes Generally, Chapter 32 Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, City Code, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Wait. Any questions by members of council or comments? Hurrying on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Osborne.
Hi.
Ms. Price.
Hi.
Ms. White Boy.
Hi.
Mr. Bestbitch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Hi.
Ms. Davis.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the ordinance passes. Thank you.
I will have the clean version of this circulated to everyone after we, after the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Item number 11 is motions and miscellaneous business inquiry of the comments by the mayor and members of city council. Note now, members can discuss matters related to the COVID-19 pandemic disaster unless germane to the emergency created by the COVID-19 pandemic disaster. Any proposed motions should be presented in another session of city council. And I will call on each member in alphabetical order for any comments that you may have. All right, I'll start with Mr. Bestbitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And related to the emergency, really as long as the emergency remains in effect, it, it seems like we've, we've figured out how to use this process Zoom platform pretty well at this point. And I would really suggest that we give serious consideration to only having four members of council present in the chamber for our regular meetings during the duration of this emergency situation. And the other three of us can participate by Zoom. So, we still have a quorum present in the chamber, we still have all seven members involved. But we make it easier for us to maintain social distancing by reducing the number of people who are actually present in the chamber at any one time. I just offer that as a, a recommendation for consideration in planning for our future meetings. And the only other thing is really a question for the city manager. If you could make your way back up to the podium, Mr. Cowell. I know that a lot of our retailers have really been very proactive in adopting measures to limit the number of people who can come into their store at any one time and marking things and directing traffic in a way that facilitates maintaining social distancing. I'm also hearing that there are some businesses that are not really doing that, and that people are experiencing large crowds in some of the business establishments, I guess particularly retail establishments. My question is, what is our ability, or really our responsibility, to deal with those kinds of issues, given the governor's executive order and what he's requiring everybody to do, when it's not happening, when people are not following those guidelines and requirements? What can we do as a city?
Yeah, we can enforce those. The way the order reads from the governor is, he creates the order and then he defers basically to locality to actually enforce, which of course is always helpful, I'm sure, but it makes it a little bit of a challenge. We haven't had too many complaints or calls. We actually this weekend responded to a couple of larger kind of family gatherings or house parties. Those have been the more common. We actually have had very few inquiries related to any kind of commercial activities not complying with the order, either in the, really in the size of the crowd, because honestly, the six-foot separation, which is, again, I'll go back, and I mean, I realize it's a sore subject, but that was part of the reason why we took the action we did on the Greenway, is that when you've got a lot of people gathered, the significance of the six-foot separation, to me, becomes a little bit less significant, I guess, or less able to really help much. So most of it has been about the number of people. We really haven't had very many concerns raised on the commercial side of things.
Well, I don't want to identify any particular business by name, so I will communicate with you directly about concerns that have been brought to my attention after this meeting is over with. I just want to close, Mr. Mayor, by saying that it's been my expectation all along that somebody is going to criticize us, some people are going to criticize us for thinking that we're going too far in imposing some of these restrictions, and other people may criticize us because they think we didn't go far enough, or we didn't act quickly enough. Knowing that we're going to be criticized one way or the other, my sense has been that we should do everything we can, that we should recognize how serious this is, we're all going to have to make some sacrifices, we're all going to have to work together to keep each other safe and get back to the time when we can be together again with as many people as we want to get together with and have as much fun as we want to have. So I just hope everybody understands that any decisions we make regarding restrictions for where people can be or what they can do are not made lightly, and they're not made because we think that's a fun thing to do. They're made because we think it's absolutely essential for the health and safety of our city and our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Best Fitch, well said. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor, just to remind everyone that there will be a live broadcast community conversation by our major healthcare providers tonight on all the television stations, so please tune into that. I want to thank all of our essential workers, the work that you do wherever it is, is saving lives. It's keeping us fed, it's keeping us sheltered. Thank you to all of you and to everyone who's watching. Thanks, everyone, for doing our part together to stay home, to stop the spread, and to save lives.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I want to start just by thanking my fellow councilmembers for the conversation that we had today. I think it was really good and really productive. And I know that it's difficult to communicate right now for a variety of reasons, and we're all struggling with trying to make really good, sound, solid decisions, and we're all making decisions with very limited information sometimes. And again, that goes for council, it goes for small business owners, it goes for households, teachers, healthcare workers. So, you know, I know that we made some effort today to try and take steps towards alleviating what pressure we can that we impose, or that the city imposes on folks. I also want to address that we have received numerous, I would say, either calls, comments, or concerns with regards to Greenway closures, similar to the gentleman who called in during the public comment section earlier during this meeting. And to echo what both Bill and Joe just said, you know, that decision wasn't made lightly. And I just want folks to know that in an effort to try and make sure that we are keeping people as safe as possible, that all of the options were weighed with regards to closing down any of our public facilities, whether it be the municipal building, or parks, or the Greenway, and that the best decisions are being made with the information that's available on how we can stop the spread. And I know that there's a lot of people that are really upset and uncomfortable with that. I do believe personally that one of the great, one of the small joys of this for me has been being out in my own neighborhood, seeing more people in my own neighborhood, out on the sidewalks and out on the streets. And while as an avid runner and cyclist and outdoor enthusiast, I certainly personally hate that the Greenways are closed. I understand why the decision was made, and I just pray that everybody does everything they can right now at this moment to try and get through this together. It looks like local news is estimating that this week and next week may be two of the hardest weeks for the entire country with regards to this pandemic. And so I'm just grateful for everybody who does take this really seriously and understands that people at every level of decision-making right now are acting with the best information they possibly can. So thank you to my fellow councilmembers, to city administration, to the city attorney and the treasurer, and everyone who is doing everything they can in their power to try and make things better right now in any small way that they can. I just appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Dogborn?
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and thank you to my fellow councilmembers who've said so many of the things that I have would also like to emphasize, including my deep appreciation and gratefulness to the conversation that we had today, prompted by Ms. Davis and Vice Mayor Cobb and Mr. Best Fitch. I am proud of the decisions that we continue to make on behalf of our city. They are not easy decisions, they are tough ones, and they are uncomfortable ones. But we are doing, as Ms. Davis said, everything that we can with the information that we have in front of us, and that continues to change daily. And I also want us to continue to, as Mayor Lee says, to stay encouraged. Yes, we may struggle to recognize what day today is, what time it is, as we try to homeschool our children, feed them, try to do the work that we still have to do, and make it through the night to get on with another day. We all are in this together. And I know that when we finally get to get outside and use the Greenway again, and stand within reasonable distance from one another, I will quote the queen, that I hope that we can be proud of the efforts that we made to keep ourselves safe, to keep our neighbors and friends and family safe, and that we do that by staying home as much as we possibly can, that we wash our hands, that we now wear masks as we have been asked to do, and that we use good judgment. And I am just so deeply appreciative for my fellow councilmembers and all of city staff who's working very hard, and for our community at large. We can do good things. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price?
Thank you. In addition to all the thank yous and the accolades that have been expressed by my colleagues, I am also very grateful of the actions that we have taken today. Just demonstrates one more, another example of how we are definitely a very caring community. And in addition to the challenges that we're all faced, I just want to take this opportunity to thank folks who are taking the time to check on folks within their neighborhoods, finding ways to, although we may not be able to be with one another physically, but I have experienced and witnesses so many acts of kindnesses. So I just want to say thank you to city staff, to all those people who are working so hard behind the scenes, those who, we have so many things that we take for granted, but definitely I would say that we are a very blessed community. I want to say thank you to my neighbors. Little things like coming to take my trash cans out and pulling them back. I see you, and I thank you. And I know that those small acts of kindnesses are happening all over the city, and they are very much appreciated. And it's those kinds of things, working together and understanding that these are challenging times, that we will make it through. Thank you.
All right, Ms. White Boyd, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to say thank you to all of the essential workers. They are so vital right now. As you can see, I am working because we are essential, and I have to do payroll because my aides are working and they would like to be paid, but I do want us to continue to pray for New York. You know, this is very real, and it's, and you know, people, I know a lot of people are taking it serious, and there are some that still don't realize how serious it is. I think I was texting Vice Mayor Cobb, and I told him that I had two cousins that had already been infected and recovered, and one cousin in Brooklyn right now that is still in isolation, who is a healthcare worker. So these workers are really exposing themselves to protect us, and what we can do to protect them is to stay at home. And so I just can't say it enough, and I just can't thank the essential workers, the healthcare workers, the food service workers, all of those folks. I just want to say thank you. I am truly grateful. I pray for my aides every day. I have to, I am for them, going in and out of homes, and but they continue to do that. We are continuing to be blessed. You know, everyone as well. We created a group chat so we can just chat every day to make sure they're okay, so my heart goes out to them. I have gotten a lot of requests from people asking, what can we do? You know, we have plenty, we want to share, what can we do? And I got an email, and you probably received it too, because it was in our city email from Stephanie Landis, excuse me, with Friendship, who is giving care packages to some of the residents there, because you know, there's no activity, there's no in or out, and there are a lot of family members who want to get to their family that can't. And so we're asking that they contact her, and it's okay to give out her number. Stephanie Landis at five four zero seven 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 two three nine nine, that's five four zero seven 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 two three nine nine, if you want to help Friendship Manor in their efforts. And there may be others out there. I wish I had your information, I only had that information. The only other thing that I came across was a virtual chip jar for some of the restaurant workers who are really, really being hit hard right now. So if you just Google "Rona Valley, virtual chip jar," it will come up, and there's a link that you can make a donation, or you can add your name as one of the servers or waitresses that currently right now is unemployed. So that's about it for me, Mayor. It's been a long two P M. session, and I'm sure everybody has gotten a lot of information they're trying to process, so I won't prolong it, but I just want to say thanks again for all of our workers out there who are working really hard.
All right, well, again, thank all of you all for what you've done, and as we said earlier, I don't want to be redundant. And let me just tell all of our citizens, please, please, remain disciplined, remain disciplined. And I feel, from what I've seen, that social distancing is working, is working. So we maintain our discipline. I think we can feel, I feel we can get through this. But again, as Ms. White Boyd stated, let's pray, let's pray for people, because this week is being described as a tough week, and not only what's happening here, but in across the country, in Louisiana, Alabama, Florida, coming, New York. Just look across the country, and people are, people are more than just numbers. They're somebody's relative, they're on somebody, and we just got to keep that in mind. So thank you all. Thank you, council members, for your courage and commitment to this job. I know it's not easy, and if anybody knows about the mail, the letters you get, I know it, because I've been getting it. I'm glad to stand with people such as you who are determined to save lives. And that's what we're doing. We're trying to save lives out here, because people are dying. Thank you so much. And item number B is vacant zones, certain authority boards, commissions, appointed by council. We did not have any of that today, and so with there being no further business to come aboard this council, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.